We go ahead and call this Board of Supervisors meeting to order and, and welcome everyone. This is a great time of the year, the holidays. We have much to be thankful for. I've asked Supervisor David Gomez to lead us in the play.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Gomez and Supervisor Ron Campbell is with us via Zoom and he assures me that he's up to dress code and
Don't stand up Ron.
Anyway, we'll next go into a call to the public. Is there anyone that'd like to address the board in call to the public?
Here's Eric Sumner. Tim Sumner, Greenlee County Sheriff. Start on the fore note, moving on to other things. A couple of recent vehicle issues at the sheriff's office. We had a guy got his vehicle out of the shop with a headlight out that he took in and once he came out, I asked him why his headlight was out at night working with him and he showed me that it just keeps coming on and off. He reached in, hit, hit the headlight and just keeps flickering on and off as, as he driving down the road. So that wasn't the worst. They had a different deputy or another deputy vehicle that was going to a call for service and his entire drive axle fell out from underneath the vehicle in the highway while he's entering out to a call. I actually sent a video or a photo of that to you and the clerk of the board, just so you're aware of that. Moving on from that to better notes, I'm going to be skipping out early yet again today. The Greenlee County Substance Abuse Coalition is bringing in a guest speaker to speak with the junior high kids in Marinsy and Duncan both. And so they'll be starting up up here in Marinsy just shortly at Fairbanks for the junior high and then in the afternoon down in Duncan. So I'll be heading out to go make sure I attend for that. And so that's a good thing. We had red ribbon week recently this past month and we went to all the schools, including the blue, every school in the county, even to the early learning development center, the preschools and the head start went to the high schools, went everywhere. Like I said, even to the blue and that was, that was good to get in all the schools and had some door decorating contests that were able to be awarded. The health department did a great job. So I wanted to say thanks to the health department. They're great partners in the red ribbon week and they provide a lot of, a lot of prizes for the kids and things like that. A lot of great activities. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to them and thank them because they do a great job, especially Nicole. And, and so then with the Graham County Substance Abuse Coalition, they've also paid, ponied up to, to get a guest speaker in here, motivational speaker about substance abuse and making healthy choices. And so I heard him over at the symposium at EAC. I think he'll be a great speaker and do a great job today. So we're excited about that. Lastly, of course, just like you already said, Chairman, it's a busy time of the year and have a lot to be thankful for. That's for sure. You know, it is, you know, Thanksgiving coming up this week, busy travel day. So I just hope everyone in the county family has a great Thanksgiving, is able to enjoy their, their time. Supervisor Campbell, I'm glad to see you got an early start on that. Getting to go up and enjoy the time. And so that's a good thing. It really is. We need to take that time with, with families and also exercise patience. It'd be a whole lot of travel. I'm sure you've already heard about the, the high numbers of travel, which is a good thing. And it's going to cause some mishaps on the roads and in the airlines and on the trains and buses or wherever, wherever it is people were trying to travel to. And so we just have to be thankful even in the midst of that as well. So anyways, thank you guys for all you do. And that's all I have today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the, Derek, would you check on, on those?
I have a note.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else like to address the public? As a board in call to the public? If not, we'll go to agenda item two, the Board of Supervisors convenes as Board Director of Green County Public Health Service District. And after the order of business will reconvene as Board of Supervisors. Consent agenda.
Is some move that we approve the consent agenda is posted?
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion seen now? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. We are now convening as the Board of Supervisors. And we will convene as the Board Directors of Green County Blood Control District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors for consideration of these items. A consent agenda.
Some more that we approve the consent agenda is posted?
I'll second that.
We have motion expected and during discussion. Seeing now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now convening as the Board of Supervisors and we will go to agenda item four, Mr. Rappier.
Thank you. The members of the board in your packet, you have the proposed resolution regarding Kai Hon. I keep getting it wrong. Did I get it right?
Hon.
Hon.
Correct.
Um, this isn't a, a small little, it looks almost like an appendix. It was brought to our attention a couple of years ago. The engineering department researched the history of this, this little street cul-de-sac. And we can find no evidence that Greenlee County has any, is any ownership interest of any kind in it. This was simply clarified that issue. And so as Supervisor Gomez has a property that's undeveloped on that. My advice is that he not participate in the discussion or vote, but essentially I'd asked the board to adopt the resolution clarifying the ownership interest of Greenlee County. There's, there's a notion, popular notion out there that things that might be dedicated to the public are dedicated to a government. And that's, that's really not the case. And so this simply clarifies that, that position.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions, Ron?
No, no, I read through it. I don't have any questions.
If there's no discussions or questions, then a motion would be in order?
My move that we can, we approve the adoption of the proposed board resolution 23-11-01 regarding Calais Yon in the Loma Linda Estate subdivision as presented.
And I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay. And I know this has been, you know, talked a lot and hopefully this is the best solution. So with that, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and, and please note that Supervisor Gomez loosed himself. So with that, we will now go to agenda item five, Austin Adams, Debra, the county administrator.
All right. So agenda item five, this is going along with redistricting. When we did our redistricting maps, this is the updates of the precinct maps and kudos to Sherry for really helping us out on this and working through this. Me, her and Bianca were working through these to get these voter precincts set up. This doesn't really do much other than clean up those redistricting lines where we adjusted those lines during redistricting. It changes those voter precincts that were aligned on those boundaries. Other than that, it just does a renaming. So when we went through this, it was just kind of getting a little unwieldy with all the different names. So we just cleaned it up to make a much simpler, simpler naming format. What you'll see is you'll see Eagle Creek in the blue still are precinct voting, meaning Eagle Creek votes in Eagle Creek, blue votes in the blue. All of the lower sections, they all have vote centers. So it won't do anything to voters. Voters will still be able to vote wherever they've chose to vote in the past. So nothing on that changes. It's just updating those boundaries and updating those map numbers. So any questions on that?
I have none.
I have none.
Appreciate your efforts in this. I, I know with all the elections, the cleaner we can have everything and, and I appreciate yours and Sherry's effort on this. So with that, a, a motion. Let's see, yeah, motion to consider the precincts due to redistrict.
I saw move that we approved in order of the update voter precinct due to redistricting as presented.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next we'll go to agenda item six, Rappier and Bianca Castignada.
The only thing I would update at this point is that the, the state's three-year projections for revenue and essentially their, their deficit or positive position on the budget is that, that they predict that 2024, the current year with fiscal year that we are in, will remain in deficit. The $400 million that has been talked about around the state is as of the, the projected first quarter numbers and they, they take those first quarter, just like we did, projected out over the year. We will know probably by January whether that's going to hold or whether it's going to go down some more. They're finding that the biggest deficit right now in terms of revenue is the, the drop in individual income taxes. There's two seasons for income taxes. We know roughly April 15th is when they're usually paid. And then for those who file extensions, there's another bump in September, October. And that, those October filers, we won't see what the impact that is until probably into December. And then of course, as the state is developing its budget, the next, you know, big deadline, April 15th occurs usually in the middle of budget season for the state. So we don't know exactly how that would go. They're projecting a deficit for 24, for 25, they project in 26, there'll be a slight surplus. There are people who are quietly admitting without any names given that they spent too much last year. I suspect the response to that will be a, a much more tight and disciplined budget in the current year. There are also legislators, legislators who will talk out loud and have their name associated with or are reminding us that 400 million is a very small percentage of 17 billion. And they're correct on that. The, the, the challenge is the trend lines. If, if you lose a penny on day one and you lose a penny every day for 365 days, it adds up. And so we'll, we'll see, see where that, that goes. The other is that the talk among economists and I, I've listened to several presentations in the last month or so. There seems to be a coalescing around the fact that, that we may not have a recession, but it'll be a continued slowdown. And Arizona's economy is well positioned to manage a recession. But as we've talked before, our big concern is the global economy and the consumption of copper. There's, there's a lot of economic instability in China right now. They, they consume a lot of copper to turn around particularly electronic equipment and sell it back to us. And so if our economy slows, there's not as much demand for things like iPhones and Androids and televisions. Then, and if their economy slows, then that affects us more than the statewide economy. But against that backdrop, I think we will continue to monitor our revenues. We will continue to look for areas that if, if revenues drop off more dramatically, then we will look where we can begin to cut. Some of our sister counties are already doing some of those things. You may have heard that Mojave County has projected $18 million deficit. And so they don't travel. Other than the supervisors, none of their staff. and so, uh, they don't travel. Other than the supervisors, none of their staff, uh, are traveling anywhere. That's a minuscule drop in the bucket in an eighteen million dollar budget or budget deficit. But they are, they are planning as well for how we tighten our belts. So we will continue to do the same. We'll monitor that and we will, um, um, certainly make recommendations for spending restrictions or, uh, you know, tightening that down if we get to that point. But other than that, that's, that's only on the horizon, um, with respect to state budgets. People are now pre-filing, um, bills. Um, as was pointed out, I'd forgotten this, but, uh, one of the people who kind of lived down legislature pointed out that those who pre-file too early just give their opponents more time to shoot arrows at their ideas. And so, uh, we may see a, a rush of these in mid to late December where they can get them in ahead of the curve, but they didn't have as much time for, for people to, to criticize them. Uh, I, I expect that we're going to see more partisan wrangling in the legislature. Um, the jury is out. There, I, I've heard both sides, the argument that the legislature will try and do everything it can to get home and go campaign. Some people believe that the Republican majorities are probably pretty safe. Others think that they are very much in jeopardy. And so, um, it'll depend on how each individual legislator feels and how busy they need to get about getting a budget and getting home to campaign. It's always better for us, the earlier they adopt a budget. Even if they send bad news our way, it gives us time to plan for it. Um, you may recall in, in fiscal year twenty-three, we got news literally the day before we adopted our, our, or had our tentative budget hearing that we had a new, uh, requirement for, uh, officer stipends and so forth. We were able to manage it, but it was tight. So, uh, certainly stand for any questions.
I don't have any.
And, and Derek.
Nothing new. I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's true.
We, we appreciate, you know, uh, I know you and I went to the ATR and, and we've been to several different views of, of how people view the budget. I think is many opinions that you can get. Uh, you know, JLBC jointly budget uh, committee, we've heard their view and we've heard, uh, ATRA, which is the Arizona Tax Research and, uh, association and, and it's interesting how you can have the same budget and there's different views on it. And, and what it's doing. And I think the more options you can get and, and draw your own conclusions, but Derek's been very active in, in making sure that he gets those different opinions from those that, that research those kinds of things and, and, uh, I appreciate it because it helps when we're budgeting to, to know those kinds of things. So thank you for your diligence there. And Ron, you have any questions?
No, no questions, but it's always a good idea to, to, uh, try to be responsible. Uh, nobody knows what the future is going to hold. I mean, so I, I think just being, um, frugal as we normally are and conservative as, as we normally are is, is the right approach. And so we'll just continue to see how this takes us, but thank you for that info.
Yes, thank you.
Business as usual.
Okay, if there's not, then we'll turn the time over to Bianca. Castaneda?
Um,
Oh, oh, did, were you not through Derek?
Oh, I'm through on that one. Yeah. In fact, I probably said too much already because like, uh, as Supervisor Gomez says, it's kind of the same record, just a, a new groove in it.
It's just a reminder, really.
It's a reminder.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Castaneda asked if I would go over the tentative calendars before she went over our regular calendar. Um, we want to put this in front of you now so we can look at it. Um, we've tried to identify, um, conflicting dates. Uh, we may have missed some, um, so we wanted to give you a chance to look at it. There's two versions here. The first is it, it more closely homes to the first and third Tuesday. Um, and then you'll see on the second calendar. If we move, um, I'm not sure I moved those or not, but if we, if we were to shift October and then the two November meet, well, the November twelfth meeting, that allows us to, uh, canvas the general election. Uh, because normally our meeting would be, uh, seven days earlier on the third, which are fifth, whatever it is. November fifth, which is election day. Um, and, and we would kindly ask that we not hold a board meeting on election day. Um, enough, enough going on in that circus day. But if we held it, uh, like I say, a week later, then we could, we could canvas the vote. And I may have the dates wrong. I was working on this while I was, I was multitasking. But, uh, the other one that I want to bring attention to is August fifth. Um, works really well for setting our tax, uh, our tax, uh, rates, and we have to do that by the nineteenth. It's the third Monday in August. All of our budget stuff works backward from that date. So we have to have our final budget hearing fourteen, no less than fourteen days before we adopt tax rates. And then when we adopt the tentative budget is, there's, there's not a deadline on that, but we do have to publish it twice. And so you'll notice that the, the tentative budget, uh, adoption date would be June eighteenth. Those become somewhat fluid as we build in additional work sessions. And as we find out what the legislature is going to do, hopefully by that point, we will know and have a very clear picture of what the legislature may send our way so that we can build it in. But that gives us time to publish and, and over the last two years, we've found that publishing um, has become trickier. Their deadlines have moved. Um, their formats have changed. And so, uh, it gives us time to work with our local, local paper, our, our official newspaper to get that published. Last year, for example, we got our first proof back and they said, this is okay in the courier, right? And it's, no, it's got to be the copper era. So, uh, and, and they have their own turnover. So we're working on that. Um, and then of course, like I say, if they move the August primary, um, into July, that could, that could upset several things, including our budget adoption schedule and, and canvassing and so forth. Uh, and that is one of the things you'll recall that they're trying to find more days between the primary and the general election in case of recounts, automatic recounts, which everybody is pretty well convinced we're going to have at least one, if not a handful. And so one of the solutions is to move that primary date up two or three weeks, uh, into July. So, um, if you've got other conflicts, um, we know that, uh, September, I think the seventeenth is a conflict with W I R. But if you'd please look this over, we will look it over closer as well. Um, and suggest any conflicts, um, then that'll help us set this in and we'll propose it for a final adoption of tentative, uh, meeting dates at our next meeting in December.
Well, January the seventeenth and February the twenty-first. If we have those on those Wednesdays, those are my WIFPA board meetings. And they will not change. Okay, so if, if we can't change those, then, then I'll, I'll be in a board meeting the same time that we're and then on in May, uh, the May, yes. Let me get. I believe the seventh. Yes, uh, that is W I R. If they've moved that up.
Did they not check with us first? What's wrong?
And, uh, I think that was. And then, uh, I, I did have a question. It's not on, on this, but when is the fair? Do we, do we know that, those dates yet?
This one.
Is it, is it the, uh, nineteen, twenty, twenty-first and twenty-second?
Should be the third weekend in September.
It should be that week, yeah.
Yes, should be the nineteenth through the twenty-second.
I will see that changing.
Okay. Okay, and that's, that's fine then. But those were the three conflicts I had.
Okay, I, I can't, I can't foresee any, uh.
Ron?
I, I don't see any issues right now.
If, if you look it over and see some, please let myself or Bianca know. We'll, we'll make those adjustments. Um, I did put in the upper paragraph on version two, basically letting people know that where there's a Monday holiday, we will often move our, our meeting to Wednesday. However, given those conflicts that you pointed out, Chairman Lo, um, we will look at those and adjust accordingly.
I, I'd appreciate it. And you, and you said there was, uh, in September, there was a, uh, conflict with W I R. Uh, that would be, uh, was that be the October?
So what, what, one of the things that
October first, yeah, the W I R far, fall board meeting is the first.
So one of the things that would help us in October is to shift both October meetings down a week. So it'd go to the tenth and then the, um, twenty.
It'd go the eighth.
Eighth and eighth and twenty-second.
Second, yes.
Um, and so that, that'll avoid the W I R conflict. And it also, um, it, it, well, it, it'll work for elections. It'll work for a lot of things for us. So if we, if you'd like, we can just bump those two down.
I, I see.
Good.
Okay, those are the only conflicts that I saw with my calendar. Appreciate those considerations.
Hey.
If there's nothing else on that, and like you say, we, you'll redo it and we can approve this at the next meeting.
We'll also have, uh, board assignments, uh, ready for approval at that meeting as well.
Yeah.
So the, the C E O, the chairman, the, you know.
L P C, I know you saw that. Email, okay.
Yeah, shoot the, the chairman, shoot the calendar changes.
Yes. Soon as we make these adjustments.
Before, before we're going to have that meeting.
Yes, we'll get that out to you this week.
Right.
Okay, if there's nothing else on that, uh, we'll turn the time over to Castaneda.
Thank you. Uh, wow, short week this week. Um, we're closed for Thanksgiving, Thursday, Friday. And that's all I have for November. Um, December, we have one board meeting scheduled. Um, second one to be determined if necessary, that's on the twelve. Small counties, ECO and WIFPA and ACO conference start on the thirteenth. Um, ACO goes through the fifteenth, CSA Board of Directors on the fourteenth. Um, county managers on the eighth. And then the festivals, uh, Quintum Festival of Lights on the second and Dunkin's on the ninth. Our offices are closed, December twenty-fifth, Monday. Um, and that's all I have for December.
Should we also note the tabletop?
Oh yeah, I did put it on there. Um, I'll go ahead and put that on our next, um, the next calendar. The tabletop, it's election tabletop, that exercise.
Oh.
You've gone to Supervisor Gomez. It's on the fifteenth and sixteenth, so it's right after ACO. And that's all I have for December. I'm going into January, um, our offices are closed Monday, um, January first. So as of now, I have our meetings, um, January third and on the seventeenth, we'll switch, we'll move that if um, to whatever date the board decides. Um, county managers meeting on the twelve. Close on the fifteenth. Um, small counties, ECO and WIFPA on the seventeenth. CSA on the eighteenth.
And then the opening session of legislature is on the eighth. And the, uh, uh, for, uh, seventeenth, it's the, uh, legislative reception.
On which date, the seventeenth?
The seventeenth, that's the day, the evening before, so there probably won't be small counties.
There won't be small counties?
There probably won't because of the legislative reception and, and Bianca, you didn't, you shouldn't have known. I mean, this is just uh, they generally have a, the CSA has a legislative reception the evening before the board meeting, so they generally don't have small counties at, I uh, CSA.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, okay, yeah. Yeah, the L P C starts on the twelfth, so starting early this year, so that's, that's the only additions I would have to the calendar, Bianca. Right now.
I noted those and I'll have them on the next.
Thank you so much.
Real quickly, if we were to move the seventeenth Board of Supervisors down one week to the twenty-third, would that work for, for everybody? That puts us, that still puts us two weeks ahead of our first meeting in February. Um, but it would, it would take us out of that very busy, um, very busy week of the, of the fifteenth.
That worked for me, but Ron, what does it, your calendar look like if you move it down a week?
Works for me. I think that'd be good on the twenty-third.
David?
I'm good.
Okay. Hey. Always something.
Always something.
Just for Richard.
It's about time. Okay, anything else? Okay, let me get back. Okay, if there's nothing else on agenda item six B, we will go to item seven, consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agenda is posted.
I'll second that.
That motion is second. Is there any discussion? Very now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very, very much. We'll now go to agenda item eight, Supervisory Reports. Mr. Campbell?
I've gotten a new report this week, but thank you.
You. Uh, Mr. Gomez?
I really don't have anything. I just have, I was at the C E O meeting, uh, board meeting on Friday and that was Randy Heiss's last meeting as our executive director and you can see the gleam in his eyes, I'll tell you, you know, so anyway, it was, uh, not really well attended, unfortunately, and I, a lot of people zoomed in and, uh, so Chief Dennis will be coming into that position and we feel he's going to do a good job. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Uh, been to various meetings, the Eastern County Organization, we had, we had, we had great discussion. Uh, we reported on several things. Uh, there was a report from the Arizona Coalition, uh, Arizona, New Mexico, Air, well, the, the Mexico, Arizona Coalition of Counties and, and, uh, uh, they reported that, uh, they didn't have any, uh, litigation debt, if they had cleared those all up and, and, uh, and updated us on several issues that they were involved with, with natural resources. Also, uh, with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, WIFPA. Uh, remember that there was a billion dollar set aside for, uh, water augmentation for the state. Well, none of those monies have been dispersed. Uh, the main reason it was, there was no mechanism or structure by which those money could be dispersed, uh, REI did come in. REI did come in, uh, a big company out of Israel with last January and uh. Wanted almost all that money committed to a, a desalination that would happen down in the. In uh Mexico and come across Mexico and in Arizona on the west side. Uh, that was uh voted down by a vote of five to four. Just felt like, hey, we haven't even had the criteria set up. How we were going to uh determine. The ways those monies were used, and so in October, we, we had, we went out for a. REI request for in uh. Exploratory information, and hopefully by January, we will have criteria set up where. We can begin to analyze some of the uh. The uh. Ways that money can be dis- distributed, whether it be in-state. Of course, with the augmentation, they want, they want outside water. Uh, because it needs to be orientated, so uh, there's everything from bringing water from the Mississippi. Bringing water out of the northwest, if you, if you had a pipeline that was about seven hundred miles. And dump it into the Colorado, of course, the problem with that, then it, then the law of the river. Takes over and all those allocations would, it would just add to that, so as you can see, water is very. Complicated and, and uh. But, but they are working on that, other, that was mostly what we talked about, uh. At uh ECO, also James Camlin, uh, said that uh. The, the water is gonna be a big thing in the uh, a lot of bills gonna be dropped on water. Uh, there already being, some have already been dropped, uh, election. Uh, there's still the feeling that the elections uh need some scrutiny. So uh, it's gonna be a very interesting session. A small counties, the, the main thing happened there, it, is we had an election for the first vice president, uh, for the CSA. Board directors with the resignation of Danny Smith. And uh Al Shepard from uh Apache County won that election, and so he will be the small counties represented. For uh, as first vice president on the uh County Supervisor's Association. Uh, with the County Supervisors Association. Robin Said, uh, who is the cap executive officer, executive director, commission there is on the state land department. She was ill, so uh, that, uh, she wasn't able to come and, and present. But uh, we had a. You know, the CSA, we've done a lot to improve our capabilities to analyze and do research. Well, that's coming to fruition in that uh, the public safety recruitment and retention study that. That all three universities came up with over four thousand uh hours of interviews and, and. Going through documents and everything else, and then CSA was a big part of that. And they had their, uh, they presented the preliminary uh findings on that. Of course, uh broadband, uh. As you all know, even this county and many counties, uh. That needs to be in our forefront of, of developing that. With that, uh. That was uh. On, on the public lands, uh. As you know, we, we use the, the uh local uh assistance and tribal contingency fund. Uh, we rewarded the, the. The fifteen states was awarded about uh. One point five billion dollars and they asked that one percent of that be given to the Center for Public Lands. Utah is a hundred percent state, Arizona, uh, has contributed a little over a million dollars to that. We still have uh two counties that haven't committed to that. Uh, but uh, very pleased, and, and I think the example of, of what. CSA did with, with analytical and the data. Is a good example of what this Center for Public Lands could do for, for all of the West. And if people would just buy in, and that will go on. Uh. Now, as long as we need it, and so it's a great. Opportunity for the states to build legacy. And something that will help us for many, many, many years, so uh, I hope that uh. We can continue that and, and it will come to fruition and, and be able to give us the data so that we can. Uh, have the data when we go back and, and express uh. Western issues. And with that, uh, like I say, Derek and I have been to several different uh. Meetings, ATRA, uh, we were invited there, we had the legislative, uh, the joint legislative policy. Uh, and Stephanie, he was there, gave his view, we had some attorneys give their view, some things. Uh, I, as I expressed, I think the more. Views of, of what's gonna happen in the state and, and uh. And what's happening and their, their uh. Their educated guesses, I guess, because like someone stated. Uh, no one knows the future, absolutely. And uh, but, but it helps when you have. Some type of direction, you know, there's gonna be choppy waters, or at least you know there's gonna be. Smooth sailing, it helps when you, when we do our budget here locally. And I appreciate all of those involved that, that do pay attention to that, because it helps us, it's a board maker. And as Ron expressed, we are a very conservative board and, and, you know, it's, it's served us well. Uh, I would hate to be facing an eighteen million dollar uh deficit, I. We, we've just never done that and appreciate Derek and, and all the. Forside and hard work that him and, and I, Renee and all our staff put into that budget because. In the long run, it helps our constituency and it. Saves us money in the long run, so thank you, Derek, to you and your staff and Renee for. And for all your hard work, because it, it comes to fruition when, when, when. We're not. Laying people off or, or having to cut this and cut that because we overspent and. I don't think people realize how much effort goes into that budget and, and how much. Everybody contributes, the other elected officials, but, but basically. The budget's put together with Renee and, and Derek and other members and, and it. Really helped Austin, so uh, thank you, and with that, that's my report. David?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one last comment on Randy Heiss. Uh, I had started the conversation with Derek, uh, uh, in regards to his retirement gathering that's gonna be on January eleventh. In Benson, uh, I brought the. Thought to Derek as far as maybe getting him a plaque from Greenie County and maybe some kind of memento or something, just. For his fourteen years of service to this county as the executive director of CGO, so I just, I just wanted to mention that.
Ron, is there any way we could? I mean, do they sell up there the cup motel, a copper splash?
Um, this chairman, this is reports only, and I, I've got a beat on that.
I'm sorry, I.
I, I, we, we've got a way we can work on it.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. And it's, it's unbelievable.
I know, is there cereal stains in that?
Yeah, he's gotta turn in one of his, huh?
Anyway, I, I'm sorry. You, you, you know, you, you, that's it, you just wanna get something done, right? Anyway, thank you for that, but I don't, I was out of order.
Chairman's out of order.
Anyway, uh, there be no further business, we want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and we, we truly have so much to be thankful for. Uh. Greenie County is as close to heaven as you can get, not be there and, and uh, we have so many family and friends that. That uh. They're just downright good people and, and it's just a great place to live and work and. And raise a family, so with that, happy Thanksgiving and this board meeting is adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.